Welcome and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Arlene Fodey. This forum is being sponsored by a few engaged citizens of Menominee Falls. However, just by being here tonight, you are engaged citizens also. This forum is being facilitated by the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County. As our flyers stated, all six of the candidates for the Menominee Falls School District School Board were invited to this forum. However, because only three are here, the forum will be shortened to 75 minutes rather than the planned 90 minutes. If you saw our flyers, you know that you could have used the QR code on them to send questions directly to the League of Women Voters before tonight's meeting. However, and this is important, you can ask questions tonight using the three-by-five cards being handed out by our high school volunteers. Now I'll turn this meeting over to the League of Women Voters. Welcome to the Candidates Forum for Menominee Falls School Board, sponsored by the engaged citizens of Menominee Falls. My name is Kaye Vance. I will be your moderator. I am joined by other volunteers from the League of Women Voters as well as from the school district of Menominee Falls. They will help run tonight's forum. It is especially gratifying to see high school kids engaged in their local democracy. The League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, grassroots organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the League never endorses a political party or a candidate. A healthy democracy relies on engaged citizens, so we thank you so much for taking the time to hear about the candidates. Election Day is April 1st, and with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. You can check the early voting dates and times at the Village Menominee Falls website. You may also request an absentee ballot online at the state-run website myvote.wi.gov, and you can find job descriptions of elected officials and other candidate information on vote411.org, which is run by the National League of Women Voters with the help from the local leagues. We also have information on how to register to vote and photo ID requirements at the table near the entrance. If you have a question for tonight's forum, please write it on the cards being distributed and pass it on to one of the volunteers. Questions were also solicited via an online form, and we got quite a few of them. Questions cannot be directed to just one candidate. Every question will go to all candidates. And we will focus on questions pertinent to the elected office. Our question sorters will be making duplicate questions and marking them, and we will put them together, sorting by category, and may write on the cards to combine questions or reword them for brevity, just to improve legibility. We ask that the audience refrain from cheering or other demonstrations in support of or against any of the candidates. Please also refrain from any distracting activities, including the use of any electronic devices. Today's candidate forum will be recorded in its entirety and available for listening on the Menominee Falls Cable Access YouTube. It will also be available on the League's Vote411 site, but not immediately, but it will be available on the Menominee Falls Cable Access channel. There are, as we've said, six candidates seeking election to three seats of the school board: Derek Blumberg, Nina Christensen, Jesse Kramer, Adam Sacks, Haley Newman Schmeling, Chris Stuhland. Haley Newman Schmeling, right?
Yeah.
[laughing] Hallie, sorry. Okay. Hallie Newman Schmeling, okay. All of the candidates were invited to this forum. Joining us tonight are Hallie Newman Schmeling, Derek Blumberg, and Jesse Kramer. And it's okay if I use your first names? Good, thank you. We will begin with 90-second opening statements from the candidates, followed by questions with two minutes allowed for each answer and three-minute closing remarks. The candidates drew numbers to determine the order of speaking. The order of first response to a question will rotate among the candidates. Our timer will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when you must stop. With the audience and the candidates honoring the guidelines for the forum, we will make the best use of time and this forum opportunity. I do let you finish sentences, so I won't cut you off mid-sentence. So we're going to begin with opening statements, and Jesse Kramer will go first.
[inaudible]
Yeah, pass the microphone around, yes.
All right. Yeah? Hear me? Great. All right, thanks for coming tonight, everyone. So my name is Jesse Kramer. I'm one of the candidates for school board. I'm first and foremost a parent of a child in the district. I have two children. One is in first grade at Shady Lane, and the other isn't quite old enough to be in the district yet, but will be, I'm sure, before I know it. A little bit about me and why I'm running for school board. I grew up down in southeastern Wisconsin in Waterford. My father, who's here tonight, was a public school teacher, so while I didn't appreciate it at the time, kind of got a very interesting perspective growing up on public education. Obviously, going to school myself in a public school, and then also coming home and kind of hearing, you know, the other side of teaching, the struggles of students and administrators, and, you know, what laws were being passed and what the board was doing. So I kind of had that interesting perspective, and then, you know, actually considered being a teacher myself. Ultimately, after high school, decided to graduate. I went to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, got a Farm D. Now I'm a pharmacy manager, and I also am an assistant professor at a local college. I'm running for school board on two main things. That is transparency, both transparency and also communication with everyone in our community and all of our educators, and also empowering our educators. So let's not micromanage our educators. Let's let them teach. Let's use their master's degrees to make our students, make our kids better students, and really leverage them and their knowledge.
Hi, I'm Hallie Newman Schmeling, and I'm also running for the Menominee Falls School Board. If there's something I want you to leave today, it's to know that I am deeply passionate about public education and healthy child development. And I'm running because I want to bring positive energy and expertise to our school board and school district. I'm a lifelong resident of Menominee Falls. I was born here, I went to K-12 public schools here, and I graduated from the high school. And I'm also invested because I also have two children in the district who attend second and fourth grade. So, Fall's pride runs deep in me. And I really view this as more than just an election. I view this as an ability to serve my community and the schools that benefited me and that I love. I also am an educator. I have 13 years of teaching experience in the classroom. I taught at the high school level special education, so I know what teaching and learning is. I've seen the capabilities of high-quality professionals, and I really believe in public schools. And I know that being an educator, I would be an asset to the school board. Lastly, you're going to see today, I'm open and honest. I could talk education all day. I can't believe I have a 90-second timer on me. But I really want to educate the community about what's going on in our schools. And I want to say thank you to all of you for coming tonight. Thank you for those who will watch. I am super grateful that we are able to have a forum so that community can be informed about who to vote for on April 1st.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank our, the folks who organized this event, the engaged citizens of Menominee Falls. Thanks to them. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for moderating, and thanks to all of you for being engaged citizens and wanting to come out here and learn more about my background, my values, and my goals for the school district. My wife and I moved here just over 20 years ago, and we have two boys. We chose Menominee Falls specifically for its incredible schools. I have two boys. One is 18 and just graduated from the high school last year. He is attending Marquette University this year. And then our younger son is in his first year at the high school. I am a career educator. I have spent 20-plus years in the classroom. I talk college English at a number of different spots in southeast Wisconsin, and I am currently administering a program at UWM. I have three priorities that I'm sure we'll get into, but they are college and career readiness, community engagement, and access and belonging. And I am just so grateful to be here. Thanks for being here. Look forward to the conversation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now we will begin the questions submitted by constituents. You have two minutes for answering. The timer will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when you must stop. We will begin with Hallie. And the question is a short one. So what is your favorite thing about the Menominee Falls School District?
Hands down, the high-quality professionals. I have been nothing but impressed. Well, I mean, when I was a student, I didn't really know it, but looking back, I'm like, dang, they were good. But being a parent in the district, I have just been blown away at the high level of professionalism, the ability to adapt, the ability to work with students at a developmental ability. And I just really respect the professionals that we have, and I know that when they can use their creativity, when they can use their level of professionalism, it only helps our students, and it only helps, right, bring in the critical thinking skills that are needed, or the hug that's maybe needed in the day. And so I highly respect the educators we have and have been nothing but impressed by them.
Derek?
For me, it would be the opportunities that Menominee Falls School District provides to students. So with older kids, I am focused on what their life is going to be like after high school, and Menominee Falls has provided them with a wide array of different opportunities to enrich themselves, to get an enormous amount of AP classes, and have the opportunity to shorten that college experience for themselves. And they also have opportunities in sports, and in particular, I am especially fond of the music programs here in Menominee Falls. I'm the president of the Band and Orchestra Bunch. My kids both have done music since they were in the sixth grade. They took advantage of the jazz band, both in middle school and at the high school level. And I think that has really given them a different kind of perspective. And our music program here is of a great high quality, and if you missed the jazz concert on Tuesday this week, you really missed out. You missed the middle schoolers and the high schoolers really doing a great job. So please get out and see some of those concerts. But again, overall, just the amount of opportunities, the career academies, the AP classes, as I said, as well as the partnerships with WCTC. There are a lot of great opportunities here in the Falls. Thank you.
Jesse?
I think my thing that I've been so impressed with thus far with our exposure to the district is just the passion that everyone has from the educators and seeing how involved they get, all the communication that's sent out, even talking to people as we've gotten on in the community and done some meeting greets. Oh, like, did you know that Mr. So-and-so, you know, in the middle school does this, and Mr. So-and-so does, like, everyone's going above and beyond. Everyone's so invested in these kids. You know, like I said before, my daughter goes to Shady Lane. She's had two great teachers, but also the principal there, Mr. Hoffman, and knowing all the extra things he does. And every day, like, he shows up to that school with just a ton of energy, right? He's excited to do his job. So that's really blown me away. I was also fortunate enough to go visit our high school robotics club, which my high school did not have a robotics club. I didn't know what I was walking into. That is the most amazing setup, if anyone's not aware. They have so many volunteers putting in what's basically at least a half-time, if not a full-time job, mentoring these kids, helping them build a robot, manage finances, machine parts, weld things together, electrical engineering. And this is all just volunteer time. So both the passion from our educators, our administrators, and then all of our, like, our families, our, and even people that don't have kids in the school anymore, where they're volunteering their time, you know, 20-plus hours a week. So I think that's the thing I've been most blown away by, by the, our district, is just it's the passion that everyone has for these kids and making their education, you know, as good as it can be with all the resources that we are fortunate enough to have.
Okay. Derek, you're the first one for question two. How do you plan to improve student performance and address the drop in learning we are seeing in our district compared to nearby districts who are showing improvements since COVID?
So I would point to one of my main priorities as a candidate, and that is access and belonging. Educational access doesn't exactly fit for this particular question, but a sense of belonging certainly does. A sense of belonging means that the students feel part of the school, like they can connect to what's going on at the school, that they are valued, and that they, you know, the students actually want to be present. I would like to see us, as a district, work on that pretty significantly. It's something that in my role at UWM has been really effective. I'm currently the program director for a trio program, basically that helps either first-generation college students, students who meet a low-income threshold, or students with a documented disability, and it helps, the program is intended to help them stay in college and be successful in college. And we have found in our work with those students that making sure that they feel connected to the group and that they feel valued has really increased their outcomes for staying in school and being successful in their classes. So that's something that I would try to focus on immediately.
Okay. Jesse? Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Did you say yes or no? Okay. How do you plan to improve student performance and address the drop in learning we are seeing in our district compared to nearby districts who are showing improvements since COVID?
Thank you. So yeah, so I was actually just looking at the standardized test scores and kind of exactly what you described, this gap that seems to be happening between us and other local districts. And obviously, the standardized test scores are not the only way to evaluate students, but it is a great way to kind of compare across districts. And one of the big things that stood out to me, just a more specific example, is the middle, an example would be the middle school language arts. So sixth to eighth graders have about 50% were proficient, I believe, in the last standardized test. Other districts have much higher than 50%. We got a new curriculum, and we eliminate, our current board eliminated Chapter One of middle school English and English arts. And they did that without bringing any experts in. And to me, that's really where I want to go. I want to, if I'm going to change the curriculum, I want to go talk to the people that are doing the work. If I'm going to change the way the work is done, then I need to know that what the decision I'm making is going to help them. And a big part of my platform is just talking with the teachers, being available, bringing them in. So let's, you know, not make decisions from up high on a mountain. Let's go see where the problems are. You know, if science education or math education is slipping in the middle school or the high school, why don't we go talk to those teachers and say, what do we think, right? We just got a new curriculum, like, is that not working for you? Is it support from home? Are there social things going on outside of school? So that's really where I think we can go, is instead of making decisions in a silo, we can bring in those administrators and those teachers that are actually doing the day-to-day work and ask what they need to be successful.
Okay, Hallie? Do you need it repeated?
Good.
Okay.
I would say that question is like the million-dollar question, because as an educator, right, it's always wondering, how can we do better? How can we meet the needs of students? And it's this beautiful jigsaw, because every child is different, no child is the same. And even as a parent, I have two children, and they are wildly different. So what works for one doesn't work for the other. What I would say from my experience is that, yes, post-COVID, children are wildly different. Not in like, they're wild, but in a way of, they really missed out on social development, you know, because we were isolated or it was confusing. And so one of my biggest priorities is integrating learning and well-being. And what I mean by that is, how do we really meet the needs of the whole child? We can't just look at children as like academic robots, because they're not. They are whole beings, and so they deserve to have their social, emotional, and physical needs met, just like their intellectual. And so that's going to be, like, maybe it sounds like pie in the sky, but as an educator, when I can meet the whole, whole child's needs, that's when they flourish. That's when they feel confident. That's when they feel capable. That's when they're like, I got this, I know this, I'm going to rock it. And so we want that foundation for students. And then also, I mean, talking to students is like the most beautiful thing, and from kindergarten through 12th grade, what kids really talk about is the social aspects of school. Or they talk about recess and gym, or they talk about conflict with friends. And so I really think we need to bring in a child perspective, or what's developmentally appropriate for children, with our, our, our adult ideologies. And so I just really, what's going to help children perform higher is by meeting their whole needs.
Jesse, you go first for this question. With the possibility of loss of federal funding for Head Start, school lunches, and special education, how would you recommend additional revenues be garnered to maintain these programs?
Sure. Obviously, there are a lot of unknowns right now, and I think that makes answering this question difficult, in addition to not maybe having a budget in front of me. That said, I believe that Menominee Falls currently gets somewhere between 5% and 10% of its funding from the federal government. I'm not sure exactly what percent is in the programs that you mentioned. But obviously, as with any organization, if you're faced with a budget cut, the first thing you need to do is really evaluate what's important, right? So the step one shouldn't be to say like, well, we still need X amount of dollars, because yes, that's what we all want. The first step should be to step back and say, you know, we need to preserve our great educators, we need to preserve that direct student-learning connection, you know, both our, you know, the educators, the, you know, the specials, the art teachers, the gym teacher, right? We need all of them to give ourselves a well-rounded education to all our kids. But can we, you know, can we skim somewhere else? Can we leverage technology to partner with another district? I think there's a lot of other ways to try and save money to preserve other things that might be cut out of the funding. Again, without having a budget and knowing all the numbers off the top of my head, it is a bit hard, but I think that's what you have to do. You can't just say, well, we need more money. I think, you know, the, any good board member really has to start by saying, how can we, how can we make this work? How can we do this? And if you can't, you know, then I think you have to go to the community and say, here's the realities of what we have. Unfortunately, here's what we won't be able to provide, you know, if we don't, you know, you know, cut something. But I really believe that we need to preserve that direct student education. We need to preserve our educators, you know, classroom supplies, right? Like, classrooms probably shouldn't be on the chopping block, right? You can't teach kindergartners without art supplies. So really focusing on the things that matter most to our students with the resources that we have.
Okay. Hallie?
So, funding, that's a joy. And what I'll say is, I was introduced to a really cool interactive map through the Department of Public Instruction. So you could go to it right now, and you could click on each community's district. So what I learned is that around $1.7 million is being funded by the federal government to the school district of Menominee Falls, which is about 4% of our entire budget. And while that sounds relatively low, we are talking like over a million dollars, like I just said. And with that comes 13 educators that are funded through federal funding. So I think it's really something to take a really serious look at, that this isn't just programs, it's people, and people teach kids. And so we really need to address, again, similar to what Jesse said, what are our priorities in the district? Because, right, when, even when you budget at your own house, right, you're going to, you're going to take your priorities first, and that's where the most money goes. And so I think as a district, we have to take a serious look at what our priorities are, and then also recognize that the community needs to be educated about what funding looks like, because it's a crazy equation set back from the early 90s. No one really knows why it still exists, and it's, I think, intentionally confusing but worth understanding. And so I would really aim to educate myself and educate the community, hear from educators, hear from students, hear from parents, hear from community. I would really need to gather a ton of information in order to make important decisions on how our schools are funded.
Okay. Derek?
This is a really important question, especially with what is happening out in the larger world right now. So the reality is, and this is not the good news, sorry about that, I'll get to the good news in a bit, but the reality is that funding for education has been cut at a state and federal level for a long time. And the burden has been placed on the taxpayers in the room. It seems like that might be the case again, and we're going to have to get even more creative than we have been in the past. So Hallie's example is a really good one. We get, you know, as Hallie said, $1.7-ish million from the federal government. There are a number of ways that you could address that. We could look at efficiencies. We have, we just hired a couple of associate, or associate vice principals?
Yes.
Yeah, associate, associate principals at the middle school. I would be looking to see what kind of redundancies we have in administration like that. I would look to improve some efficiency in the administrative office. What I would not want to do is cut anything that is directly student-facing, that is engaged specifically with our young people in the district. As I said, we would have to get a bit creative. Other districts have been trying to address these kinds of concerns and projects. Elm Brook, for example, hired a fundraiser full-time to raise money for special projects in their district. So that would be something like the football field, or whatever it might be, capital kinds of improvements, like roofs and whatnot. I think that's something that the district could explore, but again, it's really difficult to come up with more specific solutions, because we just don't know what the picture is going to be. The last thing that I will mention is that the district is getting special education funding from the state, but it is a little reversed from what the state had promised districts originally. So that is another place that we could do some advocating for ourselves and advocate at the state level to increase that funding to help make up for the budget shortfall. Thank you.
Thank you. Hallie, you're first on this one. What is your top priority if you were to get elected to the school board?
My top priority, number one, is increasing educator input in decision-making. No surprise, I'm a big fan of high-quality educators as an educator myself. I know what it takes to be on the front lines. I know what it takes to work with students and be able to flex and adapt and do what's best. And what I've really been seeing and being, and been discouraged by within the district for the past three years is really an omission of consulting or working with the high-quality professionals that we have. And I'll tell you, a lot of things look very good on paper, but you put them in front of kids in a classroom, and it blows up pretty quick. So just having that perspective, knowing what will work, having that expertise at the table is important. And I believe that educators, administrators, and board members, coming from their perspectives, can all come to a solution that would work for everybody. Because I can't possibly think of every scenario, just like, you know, so the board can't think of every scenario, and the administration can't think of every scenario, and the teachers can't think of every scenario in a silo. So we have to have a way, a means of collaborating consistently and productively so that we can meet the needs of all students. And right, I just, I want to give props and a huge thank you to our teachers for enduring what you've been enduring for the past three years, doing things that I think sometimes morally have been difficult to do, because there's, I have to teach this curriculum, but I know what would be best for that child in front of me, and can I teach it or not? And I just don't think that that's fair to the professionals that we have, to have them question their professionalism on a consistent basis. So number one priority is involve educators.
Okay. Derek?
Yeah, so you're going to hear a similar, but
to have them question their professionalism on a consistent basis. So, number-one priority is involve educators.
Okay. Derek?
Yeah, so, you're gonna hear a similar but slightly different answer from me, but I think all of us are concerned about similar things to what Hallie described. Community engagement is my number-one priority as a candidate. I have grown concerned about the current board and their lack of engagement with the community. When my children were small, when my oldest was at Ben Franklin, I knew who the board members were by face, because I would see them at events. I could walk up to them, I could talk to them about what was going on in my child's classroom, about what was happening in the school, and feel heard, feel seen, they knew who I was. It has been extremely difficult, as a parent in this district, to communicate with the school board, the current school board. And I think that is a consistent issue. As Hallie said, it also extends to the teachers, and they, the current board is not listening to the expertise of the teachers and educators that are in the district, and that is also deeply concerning to me. So, my number-one priority would be to be improving communication with all of the different stakeholders. Families of students, the educators in our schools, the administrators at the district office, as well as the school board. And of course, all of our community members as well, because everyone has a stake in this. If we can improve communication with all of these different stakeholders, I think we can make a real difference in improving the district. Thank you.
Okay. Jessie?
So, I believe after being elected, the first thing I would do is go learn what I don't know. I wanna go, I know quite a bit about Shady Lane, because my daughter goes there, and I've sat down with some other leaders in the district. But really, my first thing that I would do is set up meetings and go learn, "What is it that our high school teachers need?", right? Meet with a couple of teachers, meet with the president, or principal, vice-principal. You know, do the same for the middle school and our elementary schools. I would rather listen to people's ideas first and understand the dynamics at play, and really hear, "What are your pain points?" Maybe it's something as simple as, "Hey, like, this part of the building doesn't work." Or maybe it's, "Hey, this whole curriculum that we're teaching 7th graders doesn't work." I don't know. So, let me go learn all that, right? And that kinda gets back to echo some things that the two peoples to my left here said, talking to the teachers more, right? Let's understand what they need, let's understand their pain points, and then keep that line of communication open moving forward. Don't just say, "Yes, thank you very much, I'll think about that for the next three years", right? If we're gonna make decisions, again, on curriculum or ways we teach, or really anything, like, let's make sure that line of communication to the teachers is open. So, that's my, would be my first thing to set up, is just getting to know, having those key individuals in all of our schools and in the administration office to know what's working, what's not, and keeping that line of communication open when I make decisions on the school board.
Okay. Derek, you're first for this question.
Exciting.
What?
It's exciting.
Okay, it's very exciting.
Okay.
It's very pertinent. Improve, what, how would you address the improvement of effective IEPs in the district?
So, I have a pretty personal connection to this, and so, it's a really vital issue for me. I did, I worked for two years at Alverno College in accessibility, which is about transitioning students from whatever situation they might have had with accommodations in their high school to the college environment. So, this matters to me pretty deeply. It's one of my campaign priorities, is access. And so, the first thing that I would do to address this is understand what's happening in our buildings. I have heard from multiple parents that the experience with special education and IEPs is inconsistent. So, it depends on the school, it depends on who is staffing those areas at those particular schools. So, what I would like to see is, what are the effective areas? And who is doing a really great job? Let's talk to them and see if we can replicate that at some of the other buildings. Is it a question of funding? Is it a question of staffing? I would be pretty concerned and interested in knowing some of those pieces. Access is a really vital issue, because we wanna make sure that all of our students have every opportunity possible to be able to succeed. And yeah, I just, I really, I believe strongly in this, so I'm excited that this was one of the questions. The first step would be to make sure that we are understanding what's happening in each of the buildings, and make sure that we are understanding what's being really effective, and talking to the staff and administration about what could, what steps could be taken to more even that experience out over the course of elementary school to high school. Thank you.
Okay. Jessie? Would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
What would you do to improve effective implementation of IEPs in the Menominee Falls School District?
So, I think IEPs are definitely something that can be challenging, especially for our, with our increasing class sizes. We've done a pretty good job to keep them manageable, but no doubt, when you're a teacher that has 22 to 26 students in a class, and you're trying to, you know, manage this wide range of students, addressing an IEP or multiple IEPs in your class can definitely be challenging. So, I think, again, it goes back to talking with the teachers and learning, you know, what time do they have, what kind of aid help do they have? Are they able to spend, you know, whether the teachers or the primary classroom teacher, or whether it be them or specialized aides or special education teachers, to go out and talk about, or engage with the student? Do they have that time? And if not, like, how can we get them that time, right? Is it, you know, leveraging technology, depending on the age of the student? Is it, you know, moving people around? Or, you know, is it even moving students around? You know, whether it be different buildings in our district? Again, just to, you know, are there different things we can do to leverage the people we have? Because you know that it's really the people that are gonna make the difference in the IEP. And then to the consistency point, again, not to try to echo Derek, but I think you do have to go look and say, "Well, if our parents are saying this, what parents are saying, 'Hey, we had a great experience'?" And you're right, we have to go, to Derek's point, let's go learn what works really well, let's figure out why it's inconsistent, and kind of talking to, talking to the leaders and those administrators to find those things that we can change for the better.
Okay. Hallie?
You all ask really good questions, and we're getting personal now, because my experience was as a high school special education teacher, so I have a lot of thoughts. Kind of three categories I put it in is the teacher perspective, the student perspective, and the parent perspective. So, I'll start with the teacher perspective. I'll be very honest with you all. The reason I left teaching is because the expectations put on a special education teacher is untenable. We really need to address that the job of a special education teacher is the job of two people. Because it's not only you servicing the child, it's also the legal documentation that is multiple pages long that requires a lot out of educators. So, that right there, there could be ways, I think creatively, we could look at. Maybe someone's just responsible for writing the paperwork, and then someone else is just responsible for offering the services to the children. That's just one that popped in my head. But, you know, and so, I think we really need to honestly look at, why are there shortages, or as I like to say, exodists, of teachers leaving specifically the special education field? Because I think we need to get creative about, we do. We do need to get creative about how we work with students with an IEP and know that it isn't just academics. If we only concentrate on academics, it's not gonna overall benefit the child. So, then thinking about the child and my experience of working with students, I was really discouraged when, in high school, I would be told that, from a high school student, "I can't read." Because since they were very little, that is what the school system has told them, because they have an IEP. And often, sometimes, things that we say are helping in schools is hurting, because we're not looking at the psychological perspective of the child. So, I think we need to be really delicate about how we explain this and empower a child who needs an IEP. And then lastly, the parent perspective. What a crazy document to look at, and terrifying as a parent to be like, "Here are all the awful things, quote-unquote, about my child." So, even just educating the parent so they can be a partner in their child's education, and also feel empowered to know what this document means and know how they can help.
Thank you. Definitely did. Jessie, you're first.
Excuse me, moderator, do we, can we have the opportunity just to comment? Or is that, are we just moving along?
Do you wanna take a little bit, when we get to for the next question?
Sure.
And you can comment. Okay. The next question, it goes to Jessie first. Before making major decisions that impact staff and students, how would you seek input from key stakeholders? How would you go about communicating with those groups?
So, in my professional life, I'm a pharmacy manager at a rather large hospital in the area, and I often have to make big decisions that are gonna impact a lot of patients. And the very first thing I do is, I go look for data, right? I go see, what can I go find from reputable sources online that says, "Here's the decision, here's why you should consider making a certain decision." So, to me, data and evidence are really important. I shouldn't just be making big decisions that impact hundreds or thousands of people based on my personal feelings, or what's currently in my head. Hopefully, there's a lot of good things in my head, but I don't know everything. So, let's get some data and evidence involved. That's really number one. Two, I like to look at what our peers are doing. So, in terms of a school board, what is Germantown doing? What's Hamilton doing? What's the rest of Walker County doing? And maybe more importantly, what are our successful peers doing? So, let's look around and learn these things. Let's see what the data is, right? Because maybe the data is all from the West Coast, and maybe that doesn't work for Wisconsin, right? So, I think it's that marriage of, what does the evidence in the data say? And then also, what are our local peers doing? And getting that background for myself. And then finally, let's go talk to the people that it's gonna impact. If it's gonna impact a bunch of high school, I don't know, science teachers, let's go, let's listen to the high school science teachers before we make a decision that's gonna affect them. Maybe it's gonna actually impact the kids, right? So, let's go, can we hear some input? And maybe have some good conversation with, maybe it's families, maybe it's the students themselves. So, those are the kind of three pillars I see when making a big decision. Data and evidence, what are our local successful peers doing? And then, what do the people that this decision is going to impact, what do they think is the best thing to do?
Can you repeat it?
Before making major decisions that impact staff and students, how would you seek input from key stakeholders? How would you go about communicating with those groups?
Thank you. Well, before I make a major decision, I'm definitely talking to people. I just can't imagine making a unilateral, like, higher-up hierarchical decision. I am someone that benefits from talking to all stakeholders. I am keenly aware that there are many stakeholders that are within a public school. So, right, we have the educators, we have the students, we have the parents, we have the taxpayers, and so, and every staff that works in a school building. And I have an ability that I would say that I really can see people's strengths, and how can we bring them together? So, I really believe we can always come up with a creative solution to a sticky situation. But I'm only gonna be able to get there if I can hear from people. Probably one of my most favorite pastimes, you can ask my kids and my husband, is I talk education non-stop, because I love it so much. And so, I really believe in educating people about what's going on. I knew this as a teacher, and I'm seeing it even in my campaign, that I can take complex things and complex decisions and break them down into accessible, easy ways to understand. I'm willing to make videos, I'm willing to type up reports, I'm willing to find any way that helps people understand. Oh, I love making a visual for things, too. And so, any way that I can get people to understand these big decisions we have to make, the better. Lastly, just say that, yeah, there are going to be big decisions that have to be made on a school board. I get that. But it really is about respecting the community, respecting the people it affects, and talking to them about it, not just giving a directive, not just saying, "This is how it is, deal with it." And I would not do that. I truly believe in collaboration and hearing from people, and I would definitely do that.
Okay. Derek, and you wanted to respond to what Hallie said about the IEP question before?
It's not exactly a response, it's just a further clarification. It's important for everybody who might be watching this and everybody who's present in the room to understand that this IEP and 504 question is going to increase rates for students of mental health challenges are increasing nationwide. So, this is something that we will have to deal with. It is something that the community is gonna have to reckon with, and the district will have to reckon with. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat the question?
I feel like I'm in a good spot about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so, making key decisions, making major decisions. It absolutely cannot be a top-down process. And from my perspective, that is what we have currently in our district, is a top-down process, where the board makes a decision, the administrators implement it, and then the teachers try to manage that decision as best they possibly can while keeping outcomes high for our students. So, what I would like to see is for that process to be reversed. If we have a major decision to be made, what I would like to see is to start from the bottom up. What is happening on the front lines? What is happening day-to-day in a person's classroom? Because if you are not the teacher in that classroom, it is impossible to have a good sense of what's going on in that classroom. You might have a perspective, right, as a parent or as a family member, but it's impossible to know everything. So, we need to trust the expertise of our professionals and our teachers. And I consider myself a pretty approachable person. I wanna make sure that folks feel like they can come to me and talk to me about concerns that are happening. And that's what I'm, what I would focus on, is that sort of bottom up. Let's focus on expertise, let's hear from parents, let's hear from students, let's hear from our teachers. And then, administration should bring a set of solutions to the school board for the school board to then make the best decision that they possibly can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Hallie, you go first on this one. It's a two-parter. Do you currently have, or have you had, children enrolled in the Menominee Falls schools? And why do you think voters who do not have children in the district should care about this election?
All right, so first of all, yes, I have children in the district, like I mentioned. I have one daughter who's at Ben Franklin in second grade, and I have another daughter who's in fourth grade at Riverside. I also attended the school district of Menominee Falls, K through 12, so I have connections to Shady Lane, what was TJ, North Middle School, and the high school. For those who don't have children in the district, this election is very vital for you as well. And why is because public schools bring so much to a community. They're not just here to serve kids and pump them out into the world, and let's cross our fingers and hope that they're successful citizens. They bring Friday night football games, they bring theater performances, they bring the jazz concert that we all missed, besides Derek. Well, I didn't mean that. And so, there's a sense of togetherness that a public school brings that I think people forget about when we're thinking about, "Oh, should I vote in the school board election or not? Well, I don't have kids, so what does it matter?" But we benefit as a community from all the resources that it provides. Obviously, I can also talk about property taxes, and if the scores go down, and because of the current way that we monitor schools, if our rating goes down, less people wanna come to Menominee Falls, and that's only gonna decrease your property value. I also heard at one of my meet-and-greets that I liked was, "You should be invested if you're in a older generation, because the youth from our schools might be taking care of you someday." So, I thought that was a good one. So, I think there are so many reasons to care. It's our community. Our school is such a cornerstone of what makes Menominee Falls so wonderful, and so, we wanna support that. And you can, through a vote.
Now, it's your turn, Derek.
On April 1st, a vote on April 1st. So, this is an excellent question. I believe I told everybody, but I do have two kids, two boys. One just graduated. One just graduated last year, but spent his whole educational career here in Menominee Falls. And then my youngest is a freshman at the high school as well and in that robotics program that Jessie was bragging about earlier. So, yes, I have two children in the district. What I would say to the folks who do not have children in the district is twofold. As Hallie said, we could talk about property values and the way that a community thrives and whether businesses and additional folks are looking to move into the district and move into the area. That is absolutely something that we could talk about. That's point one. But for me, public education is the bedrock of society. This is an incredibly complex world that we are living in. And I want to make sure that we, as a community, are able to navigate through that world. To be able to do that, our citizens, our students that we are graduating from our schools need to be able to think critically about the world. And as Hallie said, we need some engineers, we need some nurses, we need some doctors, we need more teachers, and we need all of the folks in between. So it truly is something that matters to every single citizen in the community. Whether you believe it does or not is something different. But it really truly matters to every single person in this room, watching at home, and even the folks who are not going to vote. Thank you so much.
Okay, Jessie?
So I have two children. I have, my oldest daughter is in first grade at Shady Lane. And then, I think I mentioned before, I have a son who is a little too young to enter schools, but he will join the Falls schools in about two years. And to those people who don't have kids in the district that are wondering why they should vote, I'm going to echo some things that the prior to responses said. But I want to say, I, my wife and I moved to Menominee Falls specifically for the schools. And we thought, because we looked around the local area, wanting to be, obviously, within a reasonable distance of work, and said, this is where we want to be. This district is where we want to be. And I think that there should be some pride in that, in the Menominee Falls, of saying, we're that great, we're this huge, land-wise, rather big district, right? We're a huge district land-wise. And then, being able to say, people want to come here, people want to keep building houses, young families want to move here because we have this great resource. And not just a resource, but also something that adds vitality to the community, right? It's the decorations and the parade on homecoming, it's the Friday night football games. It's the well-educated kids that are, that have part-time jobs that are integrated in our community, you know, with, you know, maybe many of us, you know, in our jobs, you know, if we're working locally. So I think that's a really important thing to think about. And again, yes, property values are important, but it's also wanting to know that the next generation that comes out of the Falls gets a full education, that doesn't get a censored or a personally, you know, a biased education. So they should care about this election because they should want that next generation to flourish and get as much out of the tax dollars that are being spent on our schools as they can and know that those graduates are set up for the future to be successful and hopefully raise their next generation of families in Menominee Falls.
Okay, thank you. Derek, you go first on the next question. How do you plan to gain educator input while you are on the school board? Please address possible policies that you believe could actually support and empower teachers.
Well, I think the first thing to do to get some educator input would be to meet with the teachers. And to meet with the Teachers Union, the Menominee Falls Education Association. I think that would be a great first step. And as for specific policies, I would have to review or have in front of me the policies that are somehow restricting that. From my perspective, it is a choice that the current board is making and the current administration in our district is making to not listen to teachers. It's, they are, as I said before, on the front lines, the folks in the classroom are the ones that understand what's going on with the students. And to not meet with their duly-elected representative from the union for quite a bit of time is really concerning. And one of the reasons that I have gotten more engaged and one of the reasons that I'm here tonight to talk to you lovely folks and one of the reasons that I'm running for school board. So, thank you.
Okay, Jessie?
So I think one of the very important things, obviously, is talking with the teachers. And I do want to call out that the three of us that are here tonight are also the three who agreed to meet with the Education Association of Menominee Falls, AKA the Teachers Union. And that the three that are not here declined to sit down and listen to their needs. And I think that needs to be said publicly because I don't know how you can be on the, I don't know how you can be on the board and not agree to listen to the concerns of the teachers. So communication is obviously super important to me. And communication with the teachers is something you have to do if you're going to have an effective school board and run a district that's going to bring those test scores up and is going to create better, better students that can compete against your peers from other districts. Now, I think the specific question was, how do you talk to teachers? So what I would like to set up, because as a board member, I would like to get input from families, from students, from people in the village that are invested. So that's a lot of people to talk to and I have a full-time job and two kids. So how do you do that, right? You need a network, right? You need your point, you need to have teachers in all the schools and say, hey, like, this decision's about to be made. Like, can you get input from your network, you know, whether it be in Ben Franklin or the high school, the middle school? Can you tell me what your group of teachers thinks about XYZ? Now, I would happily listen to any teacher that wants to email me directly, but everyone gets too many emails, right? So I don't think that can be an expectation for, oh, every teacher should email me about everything, right? Let's get a point person, let's put together some talking points that our educators want to see, you know, obviously depending on the policy we're talking about. Get it to me, let me put that together from the different schools leaders. And then I can have that as part of my knowledge when I'm going to make board decisions.
Okay. Myself, I, like they said, I'm going to meet with the teachers. What that looks like is, yeah, I think a great resource to start is to talk with the Education Association here. Because I had the pleasure and privilege of being able to work with the Menominee Falls Education Association. I find it wild that I was actually elected as their president for the past year because teachers are so in fear that they didn't want any retribution or a target on their back if they became the president. And that's a problem. I enjoyed being the president, I enjoyed being able to advocate on their behalf, and I was like, this is wrong, you know? Like, it's your education association, you have the frontline experience, I need to hear from you. And even sitting when I was a teacher, sitting in a room of educators is really special. They are the most creative problem solvers I've ever met. And you want to talk about finding a solution with zero dollars in a budget? You got to go to teachers. And so, I think we just need to harness more of that creativity and that scrappiness of being able to figure out a solution to really hard problems. And so, maybe that looks like inviting the Education Association to sit, have a representative sit on the school board with us. Maybe that's them just giving a report and telling us what's going on. I don't totally know and I understand the comfort level, you know, they have to determine, but obviously, talking to teachers is a very big priority for me. And as far as policies go, I think any policy that feels threatening or restrictive should have, should be taken a serious look at. We've got a policy 361 that talks about supplemental materials. I think it's wrong that every supplemental material has to be approved. Or there's a policy on talking controversial topics in the classroom. Let's talk with teachers to figure out how to best write that policy.
Okay, thank you. We have time for one more question. And it's going to start with Jessie. You will be first for this one. How do you plan to work with board members who are ideologically opposed to you? Easy one.
So, obviously, I think our, we look at our society and we see, you know, maybe a more and more divided society. But at the end of the day, we have seven school board members. And we are all on the school board to do what's best for the kids. We may have different ideas of how to get there, but I think we at least have that starting spot, no matter what beliefs or learned experiences we carry, the other board members may carry with them. We're all there because we believe that our decisions will be the best for the students of Menominee Falls. So I think you have to start at that, what's really the best for the students. Now, how do you, how do you argue against people, right? And it's, and I think that's the problem, it's not an argument, right? It has to be a discussion, right? It does, not everything has to be a you versus me. There's middle grounds to be had, there's compromises to be made. We have to remember that. Board members that may be ideologically different from myself, I consider myself pretty in the middle. But if we are way apart on an issue, there's a, there's an area for compromise, there's an area to talk about what is best for the kids and try to understand their point of view. Just like I can't envision everyone else's point of view and understand their learned experiences, nor can they mine. So I think it's important to have that, that in the back of your head and not make it adversarial. Because I think if you get a board that is you versus me, that's not going to work. We have to remember that a large number of people voted for whoever is ideologically different than me. So the community wants that person on the board. So they also want me on the board. So that then becomes my task, is to sit down with that person and not be their enemy, but rather work with them and hopefully come to a shared understanding or compromise.
Okay, Hallie?
I am open and welcome conversation all the time. I would love to really understand the perspective of some of the people sitting on the board. I would take time to understand it, I would ask questions to understand it, and I would hope that it would be received both ways because they have a perspective, I have a perspective, we have to reach a compromise. I don't feel worried about talking to someone who ideology thinks differently than me because honestly, I don't always necessarily think that my perspective is just an ideology. I do have an expertise. And that, not that it's the end-all, be-all, but I have an expertise in education and a perspective of what it's like to be in a classroom. And so, I think I have that to offer. And so, I would hope that that would be something that would be well-received. And I, again, I am so open. I wouldn't run for the school board if I wanted to rule with an iron fist or I wanted to be like, it's my way or the highway. Because that is what truly bothers me about what is going on right now. Like Derek mentioned previously, the hierarchy, even in a classroom. If I was a teacher, just telling people what to do and didn't listen to the perspective of students, we'd get nowhere. I'll also say, as a teacher, I've worked with many different cast of characters in the most respectful way, whether it's high school students or their parents. I do know how to genuinely listen, I do know how to find strengths, and I know how to find common ground. And that's how I would approach it.
Okay, Derek?
Okay. So what I'd like to say first is that these elected offices are theoretically nonpartisan. It should not necessarily be about your personal political ideology. The focus has to be on what hopefully we can all find as common ground and that is the success of our students in the district. That should be the guiding star for whatever decisions are being made. And I'm not saying that it's not right now, but I think there's two, there's a lot going on in our world. Our world, as Jessie mentioned earlier, is increasingly ideologically divided. I think all of the parents in this community, no matter who they may have voted for in other elections, they want their students to be successful and to have opportunities. So if we can all agree on that and we can find that kind of common ground, then we can move forward from there. And I think that, you know, as long as you can find that common ground on student success, and it's important to have a variety of different perspectives as well. We talked earlier about the possibility of changes to federal funding for education, to the US Department of Education. And having a wide variety of perspectives on the board is going to be vital so that people can understand, people have different experiences and come from different places. They're going to be able to bring those perspectives forward and then try to come to the best compromise that they possibly can. And this is about everyone's students, not just mine, not just yours. It's about everyone's students and making sure that they can all find some success and opportunity in our district. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now we will begin with closing remarks. We have three minutes for each of you for the closing remarks, and we will begin with Hallie.
All right, so again, I am Hallie Newman Schmeling, running for Menominee Falls School Board. I hope that you leave today remembering quite a few things about me. One, I hope that you remember that I'm a lifelong resident and I am deeply committed to not only our schools, but also our community. And that me wanting to serve on the board is that, it's a service to our community and schools. I also hope you remember that I have expertise in the classroom and that I truly understand what real teaching and learning is and that I, I believe that it's an asset to have an educator or someone with education on a school board. And I also hope you could feel for me, that I am very open and honest. I love talking about education. And I'll continue to do that if I'm elected, whether you voted for me or not, because I believe in transparency and I believe we need balance on our board and I believe I could help contribute to that balance. I've been discouraged by what's been happening in the school district of Menominee Falls for the past three years. I've been in pain as an educator because what I see is not education going on right now. I see our district has been taken over by extreme political agendas. I've been in fear as a parent because I worry about what my children and all children are experiencing, have been experiencing in our schools based on removal of books and curriculum. And so, I worry about what will that look like for them moving forward. And I've been discouraged, but not surprised, that we have six people running for the school board and only three of us showed up. Now, I say I'm not surprised because at least two of the incumbents, this is how they've been operating the past three years, of really not being open or transparent to the community. And so, I think this just is an example of a crystal ball for the future, if they were elected. Most of all, I hope you could tell that I'm deeply passionate about public education and about healthy child development. I want to reinvigorate and bring positive energy back to our schools. I want teachers to be excited, I want kids to be excited, I want us to be excited about what's happening in our schools. And I also want to remind and educate the community about the importance of our public schools in our community. I think the beautiful thing about public schools is that it serves all students and turns nobody away. And so, all students deserve to feel welcomed. I also want to remind you that public education has high standards and has high-quality professionals because it's required for every professional to have at least a bachelor's degree in education. And then, like I said before, if you don't have children in the district, the concept of pride and togetherness that our public school brings is endless. And I want to keep that. This election is about Menominee Falls, it's not about if you're Republican or Democrat. So I hope that I earned your vote today because I really want us to thrive.
So you've heard a whole bunch of things tonight. It is likely that some of the things resonated with your experience and your understanding of what's going on with the district. It's likely that you heard some things that you still have questions about. That's okay, I still have a lot of questions. And I want to make sure that I'm still learning and still hearing from everybody out here in the community. Just as a quick reminder, I'm Derek Blumberg, I'm running for Menominee Falls School Board. I am focused on three specific things for my campaign. I'm focused on community engagement. I want to make sure that the school board, and certainly myself as a member, is out in the community and listening to the people who are being impacted by the decisions that the board is making. I pledge to be more involved and to be out in the community and to be available. and to be available um to voters and uh all stakeholders. My second priority is belonging and access. We talked early on about belonging, making sure that students have a sense that they uh are welcome at a particular school and in our district. And that's going to lead to um better educational outcomes. Also concerned very much about access. We had a special education question, an IEP question. That's something that matters to me as well. If elected, um, when elected, I pledge to be um focused on making sure that all of our students have access to a good quality education. And then third, uh college and career readiness. We spoke about that a little bit. Um, but uh it's it's important to me that all of our students, no matter what their decisions might be, after they leave um uh the high school, after they graduate, whether it is work, whether it is college, whether it is technical college, I want them to have options and opportunities, and I want to make sure that that happens. So I pledge to continue um the great work that has um been established here in Menominee Falls and even expand uh those partnerships and those opportunities. Last, as I close, I'd like to thank you all for being here um and being active and engaged citizens to listen to some of the things that um we had to say or uh listening to my background, my values, my goals for the school. I would especially like to thank the members of the community that have opened up their homes and had um family, friends, neighbors uh over to meet um uh the candidates and uh discuss what's going on in our district. That is incredibly valuable. Um, I have gained a lot of information and knowledge. It's been my favorite part of this process to be out in the community, speaking to people about what's happening in our district. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
Okay, Jesse?
I'm Jesse Kramer. I'm running for school board. I have two young kids that will grow up and go through the district. I never intended to get this involved with the school district this fast. But after moving here and having a daughter start in school district and starting to pay more attention as it affected our family more, my wife and I became increasingly concerned about what was going on in our schools, in particular with our school board. And we felt like we had to act. So that's why I'm here, is because I'm a concerned parent that thinks that I can make a positive impact on the kids that go to the school here. One of the biggest things that pushed me to run was the lack of transparency we've seen from our current board, from not following the policies that they themselves wrote uh to outright lying to the community, um, you know, after we've through some open record requests that were um publicized. So that that's not okay. And it feels like a lot of their decisions are made in a silo and for reasons that aren't really clear how they help all the kids in the district. And the pace of change in our society and our world is too fast to be trying to score political points on a school board, right? We have to focus on what's important to students. So let's start leveraging our teachers instead of micromanaging them. We have a lot of teachers and sixty-plus percent of them have a master's degree. Why are we macro-managing people with master's degrees? Uh, as a professional myself, uh and a manager myself, I know that employees under me don't want to be micromanaged. They do their best work when they have the autonomy to make professional decisions. We have a schools full of professionals teaching our kids and we want to micromanage everything that they do and everything they bring into the classroom. And that's not right. That's not how you get the best outcomes out of people. That's not how you get teachers that stay in your district for their entire careers and build networks and build out unique uh systems and unique extra programs that they can do with with kids. Teachers aren't going to do that if you don't give them that autonomy. And finally, communication. I've been underwhelmed with the responses that I've gotten from our current board members. I want to be someone on the board that can listen to both community members, teachers, students, family, whoever you may be. If you have a stake in this town, in this district, you should get a, have a voice. You should get a response from your school board members when you reach out with a concern. You should get a response if you go to a board meeting and speak up. I think those are important things for board members to do. And those are the three big reasons I'm running, and I hope I've earned your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The League reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. The typical turnout for a spring election is about thirty percent of eligible voters. The turnout among registered voters in Waukesha County for April 2024 was just under forty percent. I trust that I know all of you intend to vote on April 1st and hope that you will help increase voter turnout by reminding your friends to vote also. On behalf of our forum sponsor and the League of Women Voters, thank you for our candidates for running for public office. Special thanks to the students who helped keep them on track with telling them how much time was left. And thanks to all of you for attending.